Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
We'll call the meeting to order at 5:33 PM. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I'll lead it tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jason and Megan, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
None from me.
None from me.
Okay, Jason?
No, none from me.
None from me.
Okay, I would like to move a couple items if it's okay with you. I'll tell you what I want to move and then you can let me know if that's okay. I would like to move 8A up to right before the review and approve the board minutes. It was cumbersome last time, which is the Roberts rules with the second motion with the seconding. I'd also like to put assignments, committee assignments, to revisit it again, which is number five under seven. I'd like to revisit it again under nine B, if that's okay.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with her.
Okay, thank you. Andy, did you have anything that needed to be added?
No.
Okay, or the principles? Okay. All right, so we will start with recognition of our retirees. So if the three of you would come and stand up here with me, I'd really appreciate that. I'm going to give the letter to two of you and I'm going to read Bev's. And so this is yours, to Terry. Thirty-seven years as the person who greeted Bellas Falls Middle School children. And we have Terry, who is 28 years, having worked in Central Elementary School. And we have Jeanne, who is 38 years with hers. I'm going to read the letter and then I'm going to let your principals talk about each of you. For 37 years, the person who greeted Bellas Falls Middle School children with a smile and encouragement for their day ahead, takes a very special person. The children and staff will miss your face in your presence at the front desk. We wish you enjoyment in the days ahead as you look back and reminisce over particular times. Experience new opportunities and find new activities to replace your work of many years. In appreciation for your many years of service to Rockingham Children, the Rockingham School Board wishes to recognize you at this time. We realize it is always difficult to leave a position and retire from a familiar setting. We wish to share with you our admiration for your dedication and take time to honor you with this keepsake and small token from the Rockingham Board of Directors. And I have a candle for you, because we can hold a candle to all the service that you have given us. That's a nice one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And now I'll let Susan talk about Bev.
So Bev served the Bellas Falls Middle School as its administrative assistant for 37 years. During that time, she guided the school through 10 changes in administration. Taught hundreds of teachers how to maintain necessary paperwork, all the while keeping the records and report cards for over 10,000 students. Bev, at one time or another, communicated with every single home that has had a student at the middle school. For 37 years, with a calm kindness, Bev answered every student's question, helped every worried parent or every panicked teacher when the photocopier was turned on. Bev greeted every day and every challenge, knowing that all she did was in the best interest and to help both students and their families. Bev will always be remembered for how much she cared for and for all that she did for everyone who has walked the halls of the Bellas Falls Middle School for the last 37 years. On a personal note, Bev happily welcomed me as the new principal this summer and eased my transition into my new position, something I will be eternally grateful for. We love you, Bev, and we wish you the very best in your most deserved retirement.
Thank you. You too. I just have to say, why did I have to ask? To go to a job every day that I loved. I loved the people, I loved the students. I was blessed to have that job for so many reasons. And now Terry and Jeanne, we're blessed that at least they're kind of staying with us and helping out a little bit in the schools when your retirement is official. So Terry, if you would talk about Jeanne?
Sure, Central Elementary School. And I am pleased to recognize the following individuals for their longstanding commitment to our school. So Jeanne Couse has been employed by the WNESU and CES for 38 years. After five years of teaching in New Hampshire, she held a variety of roles from kindergarten and first grade classroom teacher to an interventionist for a variety of grade levels. Jeanne has been a valuable member of our school community. And while we are pleased to that she has not officially retired fully, she will be joining us, still benefiting other students and staff for halftime this year and then continue on for literacy and math interventions. So we're not quite done with you yet. Thank you, Jeanne, for all of your years of service to our school. And we are so grateful, looking forward to having you again.
Thank you.
And Terry Obomoski has been our longest-serving teacher for 42 years within the SU. Terry first served as an assistant teacher at Central, and then she shifted to students and families in the Grafton Elementary Schools for 16 years before coming back to Central. Terry also job shared in second grade and did renew recovery work. We've had the distinct pleasure of having Terry serve our students and staff for the following 26 years after that. She officially retired in June, but like Jeanne, we have the privilege of having Terry part-time on our staff as an interventionist role for literacy and math. And we are most grateful for her years of service and continue to service right now in our school. Thank you so much, Terry.
We're still going to take a picture.
I would just like to say thank you. And it's been an honor to work in this district. And there's actually someone in this room that was in my class, would he as well? And I was going to say the same thing. I had Ricky, I said, "Hooray." And I'm only 39, I want that in the notes. But I just couldn't leave, that's why I'm back at time.
That's great, thank you. So if you could, if you don't mind taking off for just a quick picture. That would be really good, just with that. We end up with looking, so we don't recognize people.
All right.
Thank you very much. If our principals want to leave, it's totally up to them. They are welcome to do that in our desk because we know you all have long, long days working with our children. And we appreciate your color to this one. The earlier reports are actually next time, so thank you. Thank you. So do we have any? Kind of wonderful, you think, right? Do we have any communication and public comment? None? Okay. We were going to take six as 8A right up next. We found it cumbersome at the last meeting, some of our members did, using the Roberts rules with the having to have a second for our motions for each one, with trying to use the Zoom and back and forth. So if you're still of the opinion, Megan and Jason, that you would like that rescinded, if one of you would make a motion?
So Priscilla, I think I'm the reason that we have the request for seconds. And that was, you know, because in my thoughts, a motion that not, you know, that enough people didn't want to carry on, didn't get a second, we didn't have to go through discussions. But that said, that's not a hill I'm prepared to die on and I could go either way. We are so small now that doesn't take long to figure out if we're all on board or not. So I'm absolutely open if, you know, if we hear what Jason has to think. You know, if it makes it smoother, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure this was how we had started out. It was the Roberts rules for small boards. So I'm so moved, in my opinion.
Okay, so I'll second it to remove the need for the second return to Roberts rules for small boards, correct?
So I think we need to do two motions, which is really cumbersome. But we need to rescind the first one, so that's what we will do. We'll vote on that. So how do you vote on rescinding? Megan?
Oh, I vote yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Okay, now if you would make a motion to follow Roberts rules for small boards, it would be appreciated.
All right, I'll move that on, so moved.
And we probably at this point could use a second.
Because we're not there yet, right?
Right. Jason, do you want the second or do you want me to?
Yeah, I second, that's good.
So how do you vote on using? I don't think we need any discussion. How do you vote on using Roberts rules for small boards in entirety? Megan?
I vote yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that'll make it easier for doing the other. And with small boards, you can also just come to a consensus too. As long as we come to a consensus, we wouldn't actually, honestly, always have to have a motion, which makes it easier too. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is to review and approve the board minutes for September 20th, 2021. Have you had a chance to read those, Megan and Jason?
Yep, I did. And I was looking for things, because I know you have an eagle eye, Priscilla, but I honestly, I didn't find any corrections.
I thought it was pretty well done, yeah.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to accept the and to approve the minutes?
Yep, so moved.
Okay, how do you vote?
Who?
Who would you vote?
Oh, I vote yes.
Jason?
Yes.
I vote yes, those are approved, good. Okay, so we still do need the minutes from March 2nd, 21, and April, I think it was the 19th, 21, and June 7th, 21. We're still a little behind on those, so we'll try to get those for the next meeting. We don't have a principals' report because we only have them come once a month, which is the next thing on the agenda. But maybe I can have Mr. Haas address the crossing guard issue. Actually, we can address that later, it's on there for later.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can address it later, it's fine. The Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union. Would either of you like to give a report on that?
Oh my goodness, Priscilla, no, thank you. I didn't, I didn't, you know, make it to the meeting the last time, but the MOU, I think, I'm still trying to wrap my head around what happened at the one I was at, so I don't feel I'm in a good position.
Okay, there was, there was a lot of discussion over the MOU. I was trying to pull my minutes.
Yeah, we had a good, over an hour discussion on just the MOU, from what I recall.
And we're still working on that, I think. Can you hear that? Right, we're still working on that. We, we need to do something about bylaws that have to be corrected by July 1st because we added the West Minister members to the board. They are, they can do only certain things. They can work on budget and one other area, personnel, were the two areas that they can work on. Otherwise, they are not allowed votes at this time until they're fully in operation next July 1st. We talked about different things under the ESAR funds and that, and set up a meeting to meet as a committee on the ESAR funds, which we did last Wednesday and got started. Mr. Haas provided us with a lot of information on where the funds have been, where they aren't to go, and what is, he's working on, what has been spent to date, actual expenditures to have for us, I believe, for the next meeting. And do you have anything else that you want to add to that, Mr. Haas?
As far as with the ESAR funds?
Or anything? At the SU meeting?
Geez, I'm trying to rack my brain around this.
Twenty-second.
No, I mean, I think the ESAR funds is, you know, is a big piece of it, the MOU.
Okay. One thing to keep in mind is for our public to know is that Secretary Dan French is planning to be with us on October 27th. And so that would be a good time for people to be listening and to have to see his ideas. Committees' policy has not met. We've had a lot of changes in the SU in the last month. And the high school committee is set up to meet next week. And I'm not sure whether we can also, you know, I could, SU meeting with that at the same time, I'm going to look into that and figure that out by Wednesday.
Are you talking about a full board or just a policy?
Just a policy committee. The high school policy committee is scheduled to meet October 12th, but I'm chair of the policy committee, so I have not set up a regular meeting on that yet, but I will shortly. Number two, recovery team, they began work, as we just said, on the ESAR 1 and 2 funds. We've already covered that pretty well, except for the HVAC and the air conditioning quality systems. We talked about those two. And we're trying to recommend that they be done together, the HVAC and air conditioning for each of the buildings under the ESAR funds, so that we can take full advantage of the money that's coming into the district. Negotiations met once and...
Meeting on Wednesday.
Right?
Wednesday we're supposed to be.
Right, we'll be meeting again this Wednesday. They, some of the changes in language were agreed to at the last meeting. It's open session. And so if the public wants to attend and see what's going on with that, the next meeting is October 6th at 6:30.
5:30.
At 5:30?
That's what we have.
Okay, then I stand corrected, thank you. At 5:30.
And it will be, it'll be the same with, if folks want to zoom in. It's a listen-only, non-participation, non-communication meeting for anyone who's not a part of the negotiation piece.
Right, I have 5:32, sorry for that mix-up. And thank you for the information on that, Mr. Haas. We're going to do assignments again under 9B, so I'm going to skip that right now, if that's all right. We've already done 8A, boy, are we fast tonight. Okay, we're down to the vacant board position. And we have a letter from Mr. McAuliffe. And it says, "My name is Jim Jigs McAuliffe, and I hereby request your consideration for a place on the Rockingham School Board. I was born and raised here in Bellas Falls and graduated from BFHS in 1962. I received an undergraduate degree from Notre Dame and an MBA from Boston University. My business career began as an investment analyst for a large insurance company and progressed to become its chief investment officer and later the president of a large property and casualty insurance company. Upon retirement, my wife and I decided to return to Bellas Falls, where we have resided since 2005. For a period of 12 years, I served on the various school boards, Rockingham, High School, and WNESU, and retired in 2018. My desire to return to the Rockingham Board is prompted by the lack of information the public is receiving about our school finances and budgets. This lack of transparency is very troubling in these turbulent COVID-19 times. I believe my background in finance will be helpful to the board and the administration. I thank you in advance for your consideration, Jim Jigs McAuliffe." And Mr. McAuliffe is here. So do either of you, Megan or Jason, have any questions for Mr. McAuliffe?
I can start, can I start, Priscilla or Jason?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So first of all, I just want to say what George Smith said to me, Mr. McAuliffe, is it takes a very special kind of person to run into a burning building. So we appreciate the, the interest absolutely in this. And I was, you know, as you know, I'm fairly new to all of this. And I highlighted the part of the letter where you talked about the lack of information and that the public is receiving. And I was fascinated by that because I also, I don't know, I feel like there's a lot more we could be doing, not necessarily to get the public to buy in. I was curious on what you, is this board, are we operating different than it has been in the past with what we released to the public? I really just wanted to, to hear your thoughts on what we could be doing differently, what you're going to bring with that statement, what you're hoping to accomplish. Because I do feel like there's a huge opportunity to, I don't know, inundate the public with all the information they could ever want. So I was curious on your thoughts on that part of your letter.
Well, when I, when I served on the board in the past, I made it a point to communicate with the public. We actually used to do the finance director or business manager for the ESU. And I actually did a little dog and pony show on Fact TV each time the budgets were up. And I think that the, if you were to look at the material that was passed out in preparation for votes on the budgets, we vote the high school budget and the Rockingham budget. It was, I thought, this year, the March of 2021 was a low point. The, in the town annual report, the financial statement was basically a budget. It was lines on a budget. And the high school brochure was little more than that. And all of the issues regarding, you know, as a taxpayer, you get your tax bill and it shows the school taxes are going up. Obviously, I know it's a very complicated formula because of the state funding of education. But nevertheless, from a taxpayer in Rockingham, is the number going up or down? Is it going up a lot or never? And I think when you go to the, to the documents that you're publishing, to try to get an explanation as to why the numbers, the costs are going up when, when you hear, again, no information is available, when you hear that the student body count is going down, it really raises a lot of questions. And I think that it's, as a board member, I would feel responsible for trying to communicate at budget time to our public, the taxpayers of Rockingham, what's happening that's driving either the increase, decrease, or the status quo with regards to our budgets. I think I have enough of a background in finance and accounting to be helpful in that regard. And I would intend to do that. So I hope that, I hope that's responsive. I don't want to get into too much detail.
No, that's perfect, Mr. McAuliffe, I really appreciate it. And I look forward to, I personally, me, feel like I have a lot to learn, that I can learn in this process. So again, thank you for throwing your name in the hat.
You're welcome.
And just at the right time too, because last year, we didn't get our budget stuff until like end of December, I think. But we are supposed to get it at our next meeting here in October 18th, the beginning of at least preliminary stuff, so that we can start working on it. That was one thing that we told them last year, we had to have it much earlier. So that'll give us another pair of eyes to be able to see that. I really appreciate that. Did you have other questions, Jason or Megan?
No, I think Megan pretty well covered it. And I think this could be a very strong addition to the board and hopefully help us get some of the mud sorted out.
Jason, would you like to make the motion to appoint Mr. McCauley, James McAuliffe, to the vacant board, one of the vacant board positions?
Can I get by with just the so moved?
You can.
All moved.
Okay, so Megan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So welcome to the board. And if you want to join a separate table, that would be great.
Why do you need to be sworn in?
You do need to, you do need to go to the town offices and be sworn in before you can vote on anything. But you can certainly join in our discussions at this time. The next thing on here is an update on the state guidelines. Basically, what we're seeing is that the state has extended masking through the November 1st deadline at this, at this time. That's right, right, November 1st, right, yeah. So we'll be continuing with the same process that we've been doing.
I do have one.
Okay, absolutely.
So what the, we received a letter from Secretary French on Friday. And they are, the state and the AOE is moving forward on their test-to-stay program. And the program will allow, when we typically do our close contact tracing, that it'll allow us to, to test a student, to do a rapid test for seven days in a row. And every day that that student is negative, they can, they can attend school. So it will drastically reduce the amount of students that would need to quarantine because of contact tracing. So we had to apply for a waiver. So Rebecca Stockwell was working on that today. We have a meeting with the company that makes the tests on Wednesday. They didn't provide a real, like timeline for a start date, so we're still working on that. But you know, it's, it's going to be labor-intensive. But I think it'll, it'll be a good thing to have kids not have to quarantine on a dietary basis. And there'll be more literature coming home and stuff like that. We just, we just got it on Friday, just started getting, making good for that, so.
And that will apply to staff as well? Can we apply it to staff?
I don't know, that, it's all been, it's all been, with the conversation with Secretary French, it's all been around students, so that'll, yeah. But I believe it'll, it should be. I have to go back and look at the literature, because everything has stuff about students and students and students. So that's been their big push, is to keep students in school, so.
Right. But if we're going to get students to school, we need the teachers there.
Right, right, well, well, again, I think, you know, we know the rules that even if you've been at, considered a close contact, if you're vaccinated and wearing a mask and asymptomatic, you can work.
You can work, right.
So.
Which is what most of our teachers are. It's just, it would be nice if those few that, that can't get it for medical reasons or something could have this as an alternative so that they didn't have to stay out of school, would provide them with a means to be there as well. So we'll look forward to finding out about that. Okay? Okay? Is there anything else on that, the state guidelines, that anybody wants to add?
I have nothing, Priscilla.
Jakes, anything? There you go.
No.
I was going to say, there's no mandate to have the vaccination. Is that correct?
Rockingham, we have mandated that they have the vaccination or test.
Or test.
And they're still, I think, working on a MOU to be able to address that. Talking about that memorandum of understanding. We're going to talk about that in executive session. Okay. Mr. Haas, can you give us an update on the crossing guard and any other situations?
Yeah. So what we found out from the crossing guard was apparently the person who used to do the crossing at Atkinson was a certified traffic control person. And Amy Rawlings was helping us out after school and trying to fill in and was informed by the Bellas Falls Police Department that she cannot perform that duty because she's not been qualified or certified to direct traffic. So I asked Jim DeBell, our Director of Operations, to look into it a little further. And what we found out is we can have someone as a crossing guard with a stop sign only, you know, the old fashioned kind of stand there and just literally, as kids are crossing, have a person there just to stop traffic. But they cannot control traffic. I've also since learned that it sounds like only one of our schools in our entire ESU has a stop sign on that Sexons River. So we are ordering stop signs because what was, what we were told by the Bellas Falls Police Department is that any person who's stepping into traffic like that has to have a high visibility vest on and must have a stop sign. So we are getting ones, and we have to work with the middle school here because they've been stopping traffic going out there as kids have been crossing. So as long as I've been in the district, so I think they're going to all have to get up to speed on that. So we're working on it, we're trying to find a person. But you know, we've got to have the stop sign first before we can have someone to go out there and do that. So that's, that's what we are on that.
So what are we doing in the meantime?
We, from day one, talked with the Bellas Falls Police Department. They are short staffed. They only have one officer on, so they have nobody that they can provide for us. We've reached out to, I know some people who do security detail and whatnot, and do, people who are certified to stop traffic. They don't have anyone. It's not, it's not worth their time and cost to send someone here to do it. They don't have someone in the area. And so, and we had to have to pay for a minimum of four hours. Jim was also reaching out to the Linden County Sheriff to see if we could get the Linden County Sheriff to come in. That is a minimum of four hours, I believe, also. That was on Friday when I was having a discussion with Jim. I haven't spoken with him today. But he was calling the sheriff's office to see if we could get a sheriff down there. I asked about the state police. He said that they wouldn't, they probably would not get involved at all. But I asked him to reach out just to double check on that piece. So we can't, you know, from what, what we heard back from the Bellas Falls Police Department is you can't just have someone go out there and stop traffic. That's the problem, is that you need to have, someone has to be in a high visibility vest with a stop sign to do that stuff.
Jakes, do we have vests?
Yeah, yeah. So people have been wearing the high visibility vests, so.
Could I make a suggestion? We have an art department. They make the sign to stop.
Yeah, I'm sure we can. The other problem is we can't find anyone. We've been asking people, we've been asking paraprofessionals before, you know, because we were offering overtime hours. And we just can't find someone on top of it. Amy Rawlings was doing it. I don't know what her stat, she was just trying to fill in and help out. I don't know if she was willing to continue to keep doing it. But we'd definitely look into the art department, see if they create some.
I mean, if the whole of this, obviously, if it's a person, then that's a bigger issue.
Right, yeah. And the sign should take less than a couple of days also from Amazon. So it's just a matter of getting that ordered. But it's a great suggestion.
Thanks. Do we want to ask Amy?
Oh, Amy's there. Hi, Amy. I didn't see you were there. Amy?
Amy Rawlings, can you?
Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm trying to find out what your status is as far as being willing to kind of fill in until we can find someone for the crossing guard down at Central. Apparently, we have a vest, and we have a sign coming, which would be.
No, I've always had a vest.
Right, yeah.
Because Central School, when I do the crossing guard at Central School, we wear a vest as well. What happened was I was spoken to by a Bellas Falls Police Officer last Friday saying that I could not do that duty because I did not have certification.
Right. And Andy was just telling us that he has looked into it and we can have someone can just stop traffic. You can't control the traffic and tell people they can go and stop, but you can stop them apparently with a stop sign. So it would certainly be safer for the children to have somebody there than trying to just cross without anybody at all. So what we're trying to find out now is since we can't find someone at this time, if you would be willing to continue to fill in in that role with a little bit more limitation than what you were doing.
Well, from what he told me, I can't without, I can't without training.
Yeah, Amy, I know. There seems to be some miscommunication. Jim spoke with the Chief of Police, and the issue is we can't wave traffic through or direct traffic in any way. He said stepping into the crosswalk, and I'm reading his email, stepping in the crosswalk and therefore in the street with a two-sided stop sign on a paddle to safely cross students is allowed. As soon as the students are clear from the street, the guard moves out of roadway and traffic flows as normal. So.
If the police?
And I do appreciate what you were, you know, I understand why you're out there and I do appreciate it. So I'm not saying that you didn't know what you were doing out there in any way. So I.
Well, I actually didn't. I was just trying to keep traffic things quickly so that there wasn't backup because it backs up at Central. It goes all the way around the street and down by Church Place. And then you have traffic all the way lined up on Atkinson either way. And it's just, it's hard. It will take forever for that to go, to flow smoothly. And I don't understand if the police have a certain way that they want to do it. I'm not understanding why they can't.
They don't have, they don't have an officer.
Everybody's short-staffed is the problem.
And to be very honest.
About this, is there a certified flagger and a certified cross?
I'm sorry?
I mean, do they have to be a certified crossing guard or just a certified flagger?
So my understanding from Jim DeBell is that to be able to direct traffic, the person must be, must have a certification for that.
Well, I just wonder if the boys in the Rockingham Town Crew, if they have a certified flagger an hour a day, possibly.
Well, so we need.
Yeah.
Yeah. We need a half an hour in the morning and we need a half an hour in the afternoon. I think that's some of the difficulty there, too. I know Jim was talking with, I'm probably going to get the name wrong. Is there an Andy that works with the town?
Yeah, he's road foreman for Rockingham. And yeah, he's like the road foreman for the village, so. He'd be another one to speak with.
Andy's the manager.
Okay.
Of the G- Road.
So he had, I know he was.
He is a superintendent.
So I don't even know what the arrangement was. There was a previous person who hired that person, who, you know, who paid for that person or anything of that nature. And when I asked, I mean, there's been a vacuum at the central office a little bit, but there doesn't seem to be the knowledge.
The person last year was hired through Green Mountain Transport.
Yep, that's one of the security.
And. But, and I don't know what happened with that or whether they.
Cass Wright quit last year. And then they hired somebody who was here for four days. And that's where I came in because no one was on the crosswalk for four days and was putting not only Central School students in danger and their families, but also the middle schoolers. I'm not so worried about Central kids because most of all, their parents are going with them. But the middle school students are walking alone and dropping things in the middle of the road and having to stop. And some people have bikes and, you know, that was the only reason why that I started there was after four days of nobody up there, people, parents were walking from Atkinson Street down saying, is anybody going to go up to the crosswalk? And since I've done it before years and years ago, I decided that, okay, somebody's got to go up there. So that's where it took place. That was my duty. It was afternoon crosswalk in front of the Central School. But then I was.
And it got me last Friday on you, yes. Okay, so I think at this point, what we need to do, Mr. Haas, is turn it back over to you because this is something that you have been working with and taking care of anyway. And it gives some thought here. You've heard Amy and that's Megan possibly. I know you got a note from, that maybe Cass Wright might be willing to do it in the morning if there was somebody in the afternoon.
I hadn't heard that.
I cannot do it in the morning. I cannot do it in the morning as I have backdoor entrance, kindergarten entrance. I greet families and I'm one of the teachers that open the doors and greet the children in the morning. And there's not enough people there. So I have duty starting at 7:45. So I can't possibly do mornings. I'll have to touch base with Carrie Kennedy and see what she says about this. I don't want to overstep by any means. I was sold by Ian Tittle, I could not do this. So, I mean, whatever's decided, I just want to do, all I want to do is to benefit the kids. That's all I'm here for. I wasn't doing it for anything, any reason, just trying to make things smooth and make traffic flow and children safe crossing the road. That's all.
We appreciate you, Amy. Thank you so much for speaking up about that. I will forward that, I'll find that email and forward that one to you again, and then it's in your hands.
If Mr. Haas just lets me know what he wants me to do, I'll be happy to do whatever I can. And I was a flagger years ago before I started teaching, so.
Oh, so you have training. There you go, Amy. Thank you very much, Amy.
No, I have training because I was forced to flag so that I would realize how much going to college and getting an education, how that important that was.
Okay. All right. And you had something else?
Yeah, there was some question about something behind.
The silo.
So I spoke with Rick Schuman regarding that. We have, the only silos that we have are for our wood chip burner that are being used.
Okay.
He said there is some scrap metal behind the dumpster and that if someone is interested in it, they just need to call him. And he can make arrangements for, if someone's looking for scrap metal. But he said the silo is.
Silo's been used.
Yeah, so.
Okay, that answered the question of the person that reached out to me. And so if anyone knows of anyone who needs, who wants scrap metal, if they call Rick Schuman, they can find out about that. Do you know if anything's been done about the rubble coming down off the?
Yeah, that was the other, say, thank you for the reminder. Just one minute right down here. So Jim DeBell did talk with Andy, and they were talking about getting a crew out there and doing, getting some of it cleaned up and working out some long-term solutions also because it's just a continual piece of, with the, with rain and whatnot and pushing it down. But they were going to try to get some guys out there and get it cleaned up. The handicap parking space here is a little bit more involved, but they can, they've just got to, they were scheduling it to come in. It was out of the way.
Great. Thank you for all those updates. Appreciate that. Okay. Number nine is appointments and resignations. Mr. Haas, do you want to fill us in on the Sexons River librarian?
Yeah, let me pull that up. So Jillian Drake, who was the Park Time School Librarian for Sexons River, had informed. Had informed Laura that she was going to need to resign. And she'd sent me an email and she said, unfortunately, I will need to leave the district due to personal reasons. And that she was going to turn in a written resignation. And it was unforeseen circumstances that came up. And she says, it's a wonderful school and a wonderful setting, but for personal reasons, she has to leave that.
Okay, so if someone resigns mid-year, there's some different protocols to do. So do we need to accept that resignation or should we leave it?
The board can or cannot. I mean, it's up to the board's choice if they want to accept the resignation or not accept the resignation. The secretary has informed us that we're just supposed to let the AOE know if someone is leaving mid-year, especially this year because there's lots of people that are having the issue, not just here, but across the state. And then if it's deemed that it's a reason that's unacceptable, a person can get their license suspended in Vermont for a full year.
So if I could have a motion from a board member to have Mr. Haas let the AOE know about the written letter from the librarian, and we'll just do it that way?
I'll make that motion, Priscilla. So I'm moved.
Jason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's been done. Okay. The next thing is new business. Is there any other new business besides the memorandum of understanding? And an issue over, there's also an issue of the real estate that we'll take up in executive session. Is there anything else for new business that anyone has?
Not for me.
Okay. So let's do director's, let's set, say, the next meeting date will be October 18th so that everybody has that, 2021, at 5:30. And we will do director's comments, and then I'll take a motion to go into executive session. So Megan, would you like to start?
Yeah, I would. I just, I want to take this little moment in time to reiterate what an amazing job I've seen Amy Rawlings do out in the crosswalk. So I'm traveling between the middle school. So I'm traveling between the middle school and Central every day and every, well, in the afternoon, I'm at Parks Place for the most part. But I'm, I'm in the area and for those of you who it's maybe been a while since you've even bothered to go down there, it can be a nightmare. And she speaks the truth. And, you know, before she was sidelined in that side gig, she was amazing. I mean, I don't care if Amy Rawling is not sanctioned to be doing that work. She did an amazing job keeping those kids safe. And, you know, for anybody who needs to hear it, it is a big concern with those poor middle schoolers because people do roll through that stop. They do try to squeak through when kids are in the crosswalk. So hopefully, this is something that we can get under control before someone gets hurt because it is quite the situation down there. So thank you, Amy, for, for, for being there for our kids when they need you.
Thank you, Megan. Jason?
No, I'm pretty much not in the comments tonight. I'm pretty good here. But I do appreciate our new member and look forward to getting sworn in here quick so that we can be a little more of a complete board than we have been. That's all. Thank you.
Jex, do you have a comment for us?
Thank you for me, for electing me to this position. I look forward to serving.
Thank you. And I want to say that I think Jex is going to bring some good, very good things to the board and be able to round out our needs and help us with that. But we do still have one more position that we do need to fill. So if there is somebody out there that's interested, if you could send a letter to the board or to the superintendent that lets us know a little bit about your background, why you want to be on the board and what would make you a good board member. That would be appreciated. Thank you. Be kind to each other. Like to say that because it's a, still, we're dealing with lots of COVID out there that is just kind of cropping up and surprising us at the worst times. So take care of yourselves and just stay healthy and be wise and kind. So could I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the MOU and real estate? The premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or person with the board involved at a substantial disadvantage.
So moved, Priscilla.
Thank you. Jason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Before you vote, I need to be, I need to invite our new board member in and Mr. Haas in so that they need to be part of that motion as well. Is that okay if I just use that as a friendly amendment, Megan?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Jason, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Megan?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes.